Parking for, as an independent kind of a senior complex, it's one per unit and there's sixty-eight units within the four-story building. So, if you look at it that way, there is no, there's no parking for employees, so to speak, with that, with the new building.
Under that scenario, under that's been presented to us, but if, if, if there were cross utilization of employees where some of the day may be spent at Traditions and then some at the, what's this called, Traditions of Smyrna Sterling at Stonecrest HUD amendment? I guess I'm trying to figure out, is there in total enough parking if that were the case? And I guess where I'm headed with it is this, if this were totally a independent operation and from the Traditions and they were totally separate employees and there was no cross utilization, then certainly I would think we would want to make sure that there were enough spaces for parking for employees. So, I'm trying to determine how many people would you have in a senior independent apartment complex? And right now, I realize that there, there's no parking included for them, but if there is this, you know, again, cross utilization may not be the right word, but if employees are going to be working at both locations and there's a way to walk across the campus, you know, would we be okay in that respect, in your opinion?
I would, I would like to know exactly how many employees.
Sure.
Total employees first before I could really say for certain.
Okay, maybe we can ask that.
Maybe they can ask that.
Yeah.
I think, I thought it was on here and it's not.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
I know I've had some information back and forth and it may have been in an email receipt from them or something that had some information, had the number of employees in addition to the number, number of beds in the facility and all that, so they might could answer that question for us.
And then I also noticed that it looks like the majority out of the sixty-eight, fifty-four are one-bedroom units, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, that might, or let me rephrase that, in your opinion, is that sufficient then? If, and would you be comfortable recommending one parking space per three beds?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's the, well, one space per each unit in the apartment complex, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is what you're?
Yeah, because that's, you want or maybe two beds, so to speak, in that scenario. And that's why I was looking, just in looking at what other communities have and what they require, we may require too much and that's why I was okay with the one per three beds, but I still think we need to address, have some there for the employees in addition to the one per three beds.
It looks like there are a number of two-bedroom.
There's fourteen units, I think, that are two-bedrooms.
But we're allocating one vehicle for the two-bedroom units, correct?
Correct, yeah. And, and that's what, that's what we require. This, I would look at this, this is similar to what we have with all the Smyrna Housing Authority complexes, those are all basically a one-per-unit and it's, it's never been an issue. You know, we've never had parking issues in those complexes of one-per-unit. Now, sometimes they may have a few extras certainly for visitors or whatever, but, and you would have some, you know, in this scenario that they presented, and it's probably true, during the day, you're going to have more visitors at the assisted living facility with maybe visiting physicians or visiting, and more employees there certainly during the day probably, and maybe the folks that are in the independent part of the building, they may be more in and out during the day. Certainly would be, have, be there at night certainly, but maybe at night you wouldn't have as many visitors or as many employees in the assisted living side. So, you could have some shared parking there and probably make it work. But I do think we still need to address at least some, for some extra spaces for the employees, not just for beds and.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think there needs to be some way to address that, to make sure that we have adequate employee parking. My last question for you, Kevin, is when we've looked at senior communities and we've looked at thus far units that were for sale, whether they be condos, a garden-type home or a single-family type home, those have always, we've always asked them to be deed restricted. How does that work or when you're looking at an apartment that is a rental?
I mean, certainly you could have a deed restriction to meet that, the Housing for Older Persons Act, is it?
We did have Nancy's place.
Yeah, and we've done that in other places.
That's right.
I don't know, this is a little bit, I don't know if the operation might be a little different here than just a typical, like the Housing Authority or Nancy's place would be as far as the operation of the facility. You could have a situation where someone may not be, meet those age requirements but could qualify for an independent living situation because, for other health reasons or whatever. So, I don't know if there's, how that could be.
Eighty-five percent of people have to be over fifty-five.
Okay.
To meet H O P A U standards.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know where you're going with that, Tim. I was going to ask the same question. If the purpose behind this is for independent living, then I would think we'd want some sort of mechanism in there to keep it from being just another typical apartment complex.
And that's certainly not what, that's not what they're planning on doing.
Well, we know that, but is there something we can do to?
And I think as the conditions, as the HUD amendment, that's what they're being approved for. They're not being approved for what they have across on the other parcel, certainly.
Right. But I think Tim's question, is there, is there anything that we can do to ensure that it won't turn into that later?
Right.
You know, I know their intent, it's a good intent, and I'm all for it.
Yeah.
I mean, all the washer and dryers, everything are enclosed, you have elevators here, that's what we're looking for, for our seniors in the community. But I'd hate to see it get used up by somebody other than seniors if that were the intent for it.
Again, I know, I think if it were to turn into something else, it couldn't because I think the zoning wouldn't allow for it and so we could enforce our zoning ordinance to be a zoning violation, but we'd have to go through all that whole process with them. But I think we would have, with or without the age restriction on it, I think we could still do.
We have enough leverage there to protect that?
Yeah, I think so.
Just to the zoning?
Be the same process.
Yeah.
And that's to protect from becoming just a, an average, I guess, use apartment complex. I'm also wondering, what about the other way? It's right next to an assisted living facility, is there, is there any potential, you know, two, three, five years from now for this to kind of evolve into more of an assisted living as well, or would that also be somehow contained within scope, you know?
Well, again, I think still, it's, it's an independent living building, so I mean, I think it would, if they wanted it converted into more of an assisted living scenario, they probably, that'd be under the same scenario as far as if they did it without any approval, there would be a zoning enforcement action before they could come back to do this whole process again.
Right. So, what you're saying is you're confident the way this HUD amendment has been presented, it restricts this to fifty-five and older and there's no further action that's needed?
It isn't restricted to fifty-five and older, it's restricted to an independent living facility, I think, which is going to largely be most likely fifty-five and older.
It doesn't have to be fifty-five.
If you want, if you wanted to add that, we could certainly add that condition if you, if that was that concern, to restrict it to fifty-five and up and then they would have roughly fifteen percent of their people could be less than fifty-five based on the act as it stated.
I'm sure that's their intention here, but I think that's the reason we're all asking the same question.
If, if you add that, just to make it clear, if you put, prove it in that manner, instead of just saying fifty-five and up, just that it meets the Housing for Older Persons Act.
Right.
Because there are some exclusions, like I said, eighty percent, I said eighty-five, but eighty percent of the folks have to be fifty-five or up, so there's, give us something to go by other than just, hey, nobody under fifty-five can be.
What would be an example of somebody not fifty-five or an older that would still qualify for independent?
I mean, to me, if there's some sort of a, someone who's younger than that, but maybe they have some sort of a.
Disability.
Some sort of disability from a vehicle accident or whatever and they, they're not, they don't need assisted living, but they may need a little bit of help, you know?
They need housing too.
Right. Something like that.
You know, I'm clear. I, I like what I'm seeing here as far as the product because I can, I can see where if you had a loved one that was in assisted living and you wanted to be close to them, you know, this would be the perfect opportunity where you could live here and continue independently and, you know, walk to take care and, you know, to visit your loved one. I just want to make sure that we're preserving that intent. Then, and I also get what you're saying as far as the eighty percent goes, that there could be other instances in which somebody maybe have some type of challenges that, you know, this is a, a good opportunity to them for the one-level living with the elevator access.
Well, and the act would allow that because it's eighty percent of the units must have at least one occupant who is fifty-five years of age, so you could have twenty percent that were under fifty-five.
Okay.
That answers my question.
Okay. Other questions for staff?
Kevin, as it relates to the employees and you were presented the comparison with Metro Nashville, one to three, have we considered that what they have would be public transportation and that's not necessarily something that's readily available in our area, which, you know, predicts that number?
Sure, that's certainly something to think about. That's, that's part of the reason I think I kind of wanted to have a few more than just the one per three, I think. I think, but there are other cities, you know, that are not Nashville, like Murfreesboro and Lebanon and some others that have some, a very similar requirement, so that may not have the public transportation that Nashville has. So, you know, I think the one per three beds is probably a pretty good scenario, maybe something we need to look at changing in our ordinance, but I do think we still need to have some for employee parking in addition to the one per three beds.
So, that's the part I just want to be clear on is, is the main concern right now is that there isn't anything addressed for employees. They, with what they're proposing, they meet the one to three?
They meet the one to three, and I think I got my math a little bit wrong. They have a hundred and one is what they would, and under their request would be required and they're providing a hundred and thirteen. That does not address, so there's twelve spaces under their scenario, extra, but they're not addressing, I don't know how many employees they have, so I don't know. I guess that's where I'm.
If we went back to our, the first with the two, instead of the three, how many spaces would they need?
They would need, let's see, forty-nine. They need to have a hundred and seventeen plus one per employee. So, that's, that would be the one per two beds.
Right.
And the sixty-eight for the new building.
And how many total are they proposing? You said a hundred and?
Hundred and thirteen.
Hundred and thirteen.
Yeah.
So, you're still four short, minus, the way we are today, minus and then employees?
Plus, yes, they're four short, plus they need some for employees, right.
Okay.
Right now, they're twelve over if we go by the three, but we don't know what the employee count is.
Right, right.
And if we went by the three and did one-seventeen, we would be, still short for employees. But we'd have a few more, right? I mean, we, instead of the one-twelve, we'd have one-seventeen, so it'd be, what, seventeen over under that scenario?
About sixteen over at that point, yeah.
If, if this was sitting by itself somewhere, no other parking, it wouldn't meet having additional parking where somebody could park and walk, like employees if they're working at one building, walking to another. If this, this was by itself on a piece of property, nothing else around it, it would not.
The existing senior living, the existing assisted living facility meets our requirements. If this were by, and so it's okay, the, if this proposed new building by itself with sixty-eight spaces, that would meet our requirements. So, it's just combined together with, I mean, because they're wanting to utilize some existing parking, it doesn't, it doesn't, the numbers don't work.
Right.
Yeah, because they're going to lose some spaces with this construction and things like that, so.
And if they, if they do have visitors or family, you know, then where do they park?
Yeah, and if, yeah, if you have a visitor at this, of course, not everyone necessarily will have a car.
Right.
In an, in an independent living facility, I mean, there certainly are scenarios where people don't, that they live in independent living and there's a shuttle bus that they, they could take in places or whatever. If everybody in this facility has a car, then they're having to park in the one per three beds and plus employees. And so, that's why, again, that's why I think I always want to have some, a few extras in that scenario. And they've got potentially twelve extra, I mean, there's twelve extra based on the scenario of what they're asking for, but we don't know how many employees they have. So, that's, and they may be here and could tell us that, but I know they're engineers here, I know for sure.
Is there someone here representing Traditions? Yeah, if you could come up and give us your name and address, please?
Sure. Jack Parker with Catalyst Design Group, twenty-six fifty Memorial Boulevard. Good evening, folks. Appreciate your time and consideration tonight. This is certainly a, a project that, that my client feels like benefits the community and we definitely are willing to work with, with you to, to make sure you're comfortable with the parking counts and building heights, all of that, but it's, the intent is for this next phase to be an independent living facility. Currently, they, each, each unit will have its own kitchen, but I believe they're going to furnish one meal per day, per unit. So, that will come from the kitchen in the senior living facility. So, they definitely are sharing resources, employees, all that. I don't believe there'll be any full-time employees stationed in the independent living. They'll, they'll walk over from the senior living site as needed. So, Kevin's right there. Our request with the one per unit on the independent living facility was, is to reduce the, the parking count for the assisted living to one space per, per three beds. I don't know the exact part, the exact number of employees. I was there over the weekend and there was less than a dozen cars total in the entire parking lot, including employees and whoever was visiting, so I, I can't say for sure, but I can, I can find that number out as far as how many, how many total employees there would be. I've proposed a kind of a compromise between just the one per three beds and, and what Kevin's asking for, one, one per three beds plus one per employee. There, there are some other municipalities that, that assess parking at one space per three beds plus one per every two employees. The, the thought being that on a typical day, that the visitors for, for the, the bed count aren't taking up all of their parking spaces. So, there's always available spaces if there are more employees than, than the one per two. So, we are, according to what the, the requested ratio that we're asking for, we, we are twelve spaces above the code minimum. Now, there, there's probably a potential for us to add a few more. It, it will be difficult, depending on the employee count, to get to one space per employee. We, we could probably, we could probably furnish fifteen to sixteen spaces above the, the code requirement in that one per three-bed scenario. And beyond that, it's going to be difficult, just, just due to the, the constraints of the site. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty well developed out as it is.
We were just, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Please.
As you're developing or getting the information on your account for employees, is it also possible to get the maximum number of employees working per shift? So, that at, you know, at one point, you may have ten or twelve, whatever your number is, and then at another shift later on, it may be less. So, that could help in kind of determining the, you know, the overflow or the usage of the parking spaces as well for the employees.
Sure.
Well, I, just looking at the plan here, I'm not seeing a commercial kitchen here. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. It's, the kitchen will be, they'll, they will prepare the meals out of the assisted living, the existing assisted.
And bring them over.
And bring them over.
And how will that work with housekeeping? Will they come over from Traditions as well, or do you know?
I, I don't know that. I don't know that.
That's, that could vary the number of people on site, employees on site.
Right. I'm, I'm pretty sure that the intent is for them, for them to share employees between the two buildings. It is a common owner, so they are going to, they're, they're going to economize the number of employees on site at any given time.
Yeah, I noticed the kitchen was not in here and that, that's a big part of your staffing, so.
Right.
The only other, the only other operation I could see potentially is I do see an office that might suggest one, possibly two employees, but I'm not seeing anything that, I do see that you've got a gymnasium and typically those aren't staffed during, at all really for that matter. And then the multipurpose room looks like that's just a meeting room and I see a laundry which, you know, again, I could see that there could be some cross utilization of staff between locations there as well.
I mean, there is a kitchen, I mean, I don't know if that'll be.
Yeah, it doesn't look commercial.
It's not commercial, right?
It's like one stove, showing there, so. And most of these have their own kitchens and their own laundry, which is, I think, important if you're doing independent living, that's what it's all about. They don't need to be going up and down steps to do laundry and things like that, so. I mean, I, you all have heard me say this probably a dozen or more times, I'm all for senior living. I think it's a growing community, we need more of it, and we get a lot of requests for it, so we just want to tweak it and get it right as far as parking and that, that sort of thing, but man, it's a product that I look forward to. Glad to see it coming.
While you're up here, I'd like to address this with both you and Kevin. The fire department would recommend, it says we recommend a driveway connection to the adjacent apartment parking lot. Are we talking about, we're not talking about the Traditions, correct? We're talking about the apartments that aren't age-restricted.
Which, right.
Correct. Okay, Sterling, yeah. All right, so I'd like to hear the merits of, or your thoughts and of course, your thoughts on that.
Well, well, the reason they had made that request is, is they were looking at it from a purely just a fire response perspective. They could come from the fire hall because they have a connection right there into the apartment complex at the backside there, and they could come straight down, it doesn't really show up on this, shows up a little bit on the drawing on the bottom right there, but they could come straight down the parking lot, make a right turn and come in on the backside.
Right.
Right here. And then they could, they would avoid coming to Rock Springs, through the roundabout and through this scenario.
Okay, so what, the comment was that we would lose parking, would we lose parking spaces if that were done?
They would lose parking right in here because you'd have to, this is where the connection would be, right here, if you could see it, from my mouse is moving there. Um, so you would lose it, the apartment complex wouldn't lose anything, this building would lose some parking spaces.
How many?
Um, three to four.
How many?
Three to four.
Three to four?
Yeah.
And I would add, Kevin, that this radius here doesn't in any way meet the fire truck turn radius criteria. So, I mean, they're going to have a hard time making this turn also. So, they're trying to avoid this turn, but they're making it here anyway, even with the connection. And there, there's a great difference of a couple of feet between this parking lot and this proposed parking lot, which makes it problematic to get down, get the truck down into the independent living site in that route. So, so we've committed that, you know, whatever it takes to, to get the circulation back through here and back out, we will, we will comply with the International Fire Code's requirements for drive widths, turning radius. We'll, we'll make sure that it, it meets code and, and we feel like that's, that's a better, that's a better alternative than trying to get another property owner that has no, has no interest or, or real reason to, to grant an access easement across their property to, to create this, this other fire turning maneuver. So, I, I'd be glad to sit down with the fire chief and talk through all of it, but I, I think we can, we can come to a, a solution without having to, to access somebody else's property to get, to get back to the back of the building.
Yeah, that's why, like I say, comments four and six were kind of tied together on our staff comments. I'm fine with working through that and even, could even address it at the site plan level, really, but I mean, we really wanted to obviously bring it to their attention at this time too, but, because we did have that concern, because the fire department specifically had that concern because of the, going all the way around the building, it's a four-story building, being able to get around it and park and may potentially extend a ladder up to that fourth floor if they needed to, to say, to get someone out. And so, that's, that's why we wanted to bring it up, but it's something we can work through, I think, if planning commission and council choose to approve the amendment, I think we can work through that piece of it before.
So, that is code compliant?
That is code compliant, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
If, you made a comment and said you all could probably get twelve to fifteen more spaces in there currently.
But what I actually, I may have misspoken if I said that. What I, what I meant is that we could get three or four more spaces to get us to fifteen, you know, fifteen to sixteen spaces above the proposed code minimum is, was the intent.
Okay. Is there twelve over?
Right, so what, I think we could find three or four more spaces in there and get to sixteen over the, the code minimum if, if we, if we were comfortable with that being a sufficient number.
Kevin, are you more comfortable with that?
Well, certainly I'd be more comfortable with it, sir. I'd like, still like to know exactly how many employees we're talking about.
And when we're talking about employees, are you talking specific to this building or shared?
Overall, shared, sure, yeah, the overall total, certainly.
Okay.
If they, if they've got, you know, twenty employees at the largest shift or whatever it is and they're going, that's going to be the largest shift and they're going to cover both buildings, that's fine. I'm not worried about that part of it.
If, if they can get four, that puts them at sixteen more.
Yeah.
And going by a one to two ratio, you're seventeen short, you're one away, so that would, that would work.
You can actually hit one-seventeen.
Yes.
Or get really close.
One-sixteen, one-seventeen, yeah.
That should cover all the staff and. Okay. Any additional questions or, or comments? Do I have a motion?
I will move to approve with staff comments and recommendations on parking and fire control.
And the.
What about the housing?
That's, that's the part of parking.
You're talking about the age restriction.
You're going to look at that, right? You just said you were going to look at that. Yes, the age restriction.
I was going to say the age restriction, the parking part of it.
That's staff comments.
Fire code and then requiring it to comply with the Housing for Older Persons Act.
Right. You said what I meant.
Okay, all right.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good discussion, everyone. Item number two under rezoning, Andre, I'm going to say Jekyll or Jackal, Stewart's Glen, eighty-one sixty-two and eighty-two eighty-six, Rocky Fork, Ambleville Road, PRD amendment.
This is a, an amendment to an existing approved PRD, it was Stewart's Glen PRD. He, he was approved for twenty single-family lots and thirty-two cottage units, essentially townhome units. Shrouding zoning is a mix of RM in Rutherford County and then the Cedar Hills and Blakeney PRDs in town. Land use plan would promote a medium-density residential of five to nine units per acre in this area. The request to the amendment would reduce the area within the approved PRD from fifteen point four acres to fourteen point two acres. Area that was, is requested to be removed, it was approved to be part of the open space for the development. So, this would increase the density from three point four units per acre to three point seven units per acre. You're not actually increasing any numbers as far as units, but we're increasing the density because the land area is going down. Again, wouldn't change the layout, number of units, amenities, requirements for architecture or anything like that. The one point two acres that would be removed from the PRD would be rezoned back to R3, which is what it was on prior to the PRD. C U D had a couple of comments in there regarding fire flow, there's, there's some upgrades underway that would take care of that, but they did include those in there. But primarily what we're talking, looking at is just taking that one point two acres out of the PRD, therefore mending the PRD. PRD, therefore mending the PRD, and then also changing that 1.2 acres from the PRD zoning back to R3. So, that's basically what I have.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, if you're showing not discussing or voting on item, this item or the following on Derby Run, I'll stand.
You good? Kevin, for everyone, could you just point out where we're talking about?
Yeah. Well, on this map, this area highlighted within the red outline, that's the area that would be coming off of the PRD and be rezoned back to R3, which is what the adjoining parcels are located or zoned, other than the Cedar Hills PRD there. Let me see if I have... This is the overall layout, this is the area, if my, that's, again, it was an area that was just set aside for open space, it was really not, it wasn't gonna be a part of any of the amenity package or anything, it was just part of the, just the open space for the development. They're still meeting all of our requirements for open space and amenities and everything, so...
Is there a home or anything in this parcel?
There is an existing home, closer to Rocky Fork Road, yeah, Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, rather. This piece of the property is completely vacant, so...
And there's no access to it?
I believe it's a part of an adjoining tract. I think it's, I don't think it's, it's not, it's not gonna be a tract by itself that has no frontage, it's gonna be combined with one of the parcels that has frontage on Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, so it's not gonna be out by itself with no access or anything like that, so.
So in fact, if something was developed with this rezoning, it would have to meet R3 requirements versus a PRD, which typically would, would be a larger lot size.
It would be a single-family, 10,000 square foot lot size, yes.
Questions for staff? Kevin, as I understood it, you were comfortable with this change and there are no issues with this?
Yes, comfortable, still meeting all of our requirements.
Okay. And you did state it, it still met our open space requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff and second. And a second for Tom. Further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved. The next item under preliminary plats, Derby Run subdivision phases 1A and 1B, 7906 Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, owner developer Charter Commercial LLC.
This is in the same general areas as one we just looked at, this is the first plat we've seen in the Derby Run, this was a PRD that was approved several months ago. This, these two phases, 1A and 1B, are total 55 lots on about 11.1 acres. We had several comments, most of them are very standard comments, comments really one through three are all standard comments and would need to remain. Comment four is regarding, is really a CUD-based comment regarding a pump station off Riley Road that they, that they are working with some folks to get put in place for fire flow purposes, so that would be deemed to remain. Comment number five has been addressed regarding the typical lot layout, and that's been corrected so we can remove that one. And then, comment number six was a comment from Public Works, they have submitted, there is some blue line streams that they have to deal with on this property, and so there's some permitting that they've gotta go through with TDEC on that, and so that's, that, we would want to keep that comment for purposes of, just as a placeholder and to, it doesn't get forgotten as they go through that TDEC process for the grading permit and everything, so. There's a whole lot of comments, but the vast majority of them are coming from Consolidated Utility District, and they need to review those, so. Comment number five would be the only one that we could take off, and then we just keep the others, really as standard comments or from Consolidated Utility District. It is compliant and does match the approved PRD that was approved, it would, provides the traffic improvements that were approved as part of the PRD as well, which are some turn lanes within Rocky Fork Ambleville Road, and shoulder widths being increased and those kind of things, so. It's, again, just, it's in compliance with the approved PRD for the site, so. I think that's all I've got.
As I recall, the CUD portion has always been part of what we've looked at and knew that there would have to be upgrades for these to develop out, and it looks like we're starting to see the work-throughs or the work plans or to do so.
Right, correct.
And everything is consistent with what we've seen?
Yes.
Questions for Kevin?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion to approve with staff comments and a second? Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And please make sure we mark... Our next preliminary plat is Gwyn Farms Phase One, Rock Springs Road at Waldron Road, owner developer Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a preliminary plat that has actually come through here once or twice before, but this, this one is really, it's very similar layout, but we did, the PRD was amended when, when the additional property was added on the Lee Road side. The townhomes that were a part of this phase are now, are gonna be in a future phase, and so this will, this plat reflects the revised and amended PRD. And so, it's primarily in the area, on this section, on this drawing that's on the, in the PowerPoint, and this area kind of, if you remember the topo on the original drawings we looked at, some of you may remember it, it's kind of at the top of the hill where the townhomes are gonna be on this area here, and so now that's gonna be all single-family, and so this really is, just so that the approved plat is consistent with the approved PRD, and so it's, the basic layout is not really changing, the improvements to Rock Springs Road, the signalization of Waldron Road, all of those things are still, all part of this plat, just as they were previously. It's really just to, so that the, this phase, which is, this phase is 101 lots on 29.15 acres, and the drawing that's on the screen there is phases one and two. Phase two, which has also been approved and is not changing, is the second entrance off of Rock Springs Road in this area here. All you're worried about tonight is just this phase here, which is at the Waldron Road intersection, and then the, kind of that curved road, and then the other road at the top of the hill. We had a comment, a couple of comments, because a lot of these have already been addressed, we already have a development agreement, things like that, and I need to check, we may have actually got the MPDS permit, I would need to check on that, we did have it on our comments. There is an existing cemetery that is not a part of this phase, it's really a part of the overall master plan, that we wanted to be sure was shown, and so they have the, in the multiple pages that are in front of you, that cemetery has been shown now. They're actually gonna be doing some, some, moving some graves and things of that nature in that area, and utilizing some of that area in the future phases, so they'll have to bring all that into compliance before they can develop that area, certainly, and so they're working on that, I believe, but. So really, comment number two, they have, we probably need to keep that comment, they did provide a plan for how they're looking at making it happen, but, just to, I don't want the cemetery to get forgotten about, so we'll leave that comment on there. So, again, it's very consistent with the amended PRD now, and it's consistent with the plats that we have seen in the past on this, on this phase.
Okay, questions for Kevin? Kevin, is staff recommending approval?
Yes.
With comments? Seeing no questions or comments, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we're on the site plans, Mitch, are you up?
I'm up.
All right.
This is a site plan for a new hangar on the airport property, Four Flyers McGrew Hangar, located on the airport near Fitzhugh Boulevard and 10th Avenue intersection. Proposed hangar is to be 100 by 60 or 6,000 square feet in size, and the leased area for this proposed hangar is about quarter acre in size. Placing this proposed hangar on an existing airport property concrete, so no new proposed asphalt, is expected for this development. Ordinance requires six spaces for parking to be added. Applicant did revise the site plan showing six additional spaces, which are proposed to be striped on the leased area. Handicap parking spaces, we're currently working through this with the applicant, working on determining what the ADA requirements are for handicap parking spaces, so we're debating about one space being required per the ordinance or whether ADA takes precedence, so that's still to be determined. Design review, architecture elevations show building to be constructed of metal, which is similar to other hangars present on the property. Bring us down to the comments section, a couple standard comments, a couple other staff comments to be addressed as well. Staff comment one regarding the existing water, sewer, and gas lines to be shown, utilities do not have a chance to look at the plan after it's resubmitted, so that comment will remain. Staff comment two, to show proposed utility lines to serve this building, chapter four of the building code, we're gonna amend that to say may require the building to be sprinkled, this is another item that we're looking at, potentially may need to be required, may not, so we're gonna leave that comment as may be required to be sprinkled. Comment three was a comment made by fire department, kind of went alongside comment two, we can get rid of comment three, being, kind of grouping it together with comment two. Staff comment four, provides fire flow information for the nearest fire hydrant, applicant has advised us that the tests are awaiting currently. Staff comment five, to show correct street for this site, they were showing for Doug Warpool address, but they have amended that to show for a Fitzhugh Boulevard address, so that comment can be removed. Staff comment six is regarding the parking spaces and the ADA handicap parking space requirement. Like I said, we're working through this with the applicant to make sure that the ADA requirements are met for this site, so whether it is one or none, staff will work with the applicant to make sure this is done correctly. With that, staff would recommend approval with the remaining comments.
John, you're going to take a moment to the situation, you're gonna check it out?
Is your hangar address?
Second time, thanks.
Can you tell us a little bit about your project here?
Sure. John Black, I'm the executive director at Smyrna Airport, and we're pretty excited about this project, it's a smaller hangar, but it will hold four aircraft and allow four more aircraft to be brought to the airport because we are 100% leased, and actually the people that are building this hangar have been on the airport for quite some time, and they're great tenants, great business partners of ours, so we support it and hope you will, too.
Questions for John while I've got him up in front? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you guys do. Paul Salil, thank you, I mean, this is exciting to see the airport continue to grow under your leadership. You know, as you grow, Smyrna grows, and it's just the, one of the, you know, assets of our community, so we appreciate that.
Says a lot about the airport, too, to be 100% leased.
Right.
You know, that's pretty strong, so.
Any questions for Mitch, staff, or the folks we have from the airport?
I missed the comment about being sprinkled.
We're currently working through that, there's a little bit discrepancy between what the building fire code says versus what the applicant is saying, so we are working through that with them, we don't have it finalized at this time, but we're gonna make sure whatever needs to be done is done properly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Several seconds. Who got in there first, I think? Tim did, yeah. All right. Any other further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item under site plans, Cedar Top Villas, 11819 Old Nashville Highway, owner developer Alcorn Properties LLC. Mitch?
This is a site plan for Cedar Top Villas, that's a PRD planned residential development including 24 townhome units, which is at the existing 11819 Old Nashville Highway. This property was recently rezoned from R3 to PRD at the November 2020 Town Council meeting. Access to the site will utilize an ingress and egress off of Old Nashville Highway, which is nearby where the existing gravel driveway exists. Plans show a 200 square foot pavilion with seating area and other open space throughout the site. Seven additional common area parking spaces are also proposed to be centrally located within this development. Proposed site plan does match with the aforementioned PRD approval, which was set forth at the council meeting. Square footage of vehicle use area, 27,952 square feet, which would require landscaping of 2,795 square feet. Applicant is proposing for 13,040 square feet, so they are far exceeding the ordinance requirement. Total parking required of 48 spaces, which is two per unit, they are proposing for 55. It does increase to 79 if you include the single car garages at each unit. Handicap parking space, none are required for this development, being as a townhome-style unit development. Landscape plants mid-by, the applicant shows a type C buffer around the property that borders the R3 zone, single-family lots within the Oak Valley subdivision. Shrubs are also depicted to be planted in front of each unit with trees scattered throughout the site. Architecture elevations show units to have a mix of cultured stone and fiber cement on the front elevations with fiber cement siding on the side and rear. Brings us to the standard comments, all of which will need to remain, and then all of the staff comments have been addressed, we'll go through them now. Staff comment one, to update the hammerhead turnaround for the fire truck, originally the fire truck would... Originally, the fire truck would have to maneuver offsite in a couple spaces, but we have worked through this with the engineer to address this comment, and fire department is satisfied with what they have seen. So we can take off that first comment. Comment two, regarding adding pavement markings in the hammerhead, which denote a fire truck turnaround. Staff did have some concerns regarding potential for people parking in that area in case of emergency, we wouldn't want that to happen. So applicant has added that marking to the pavement. Comment three, to include total square footage of proposed landscaping. Applicant did address that comment as well. So staff is satisfied with the comments. All that would remain left are the standard comments. With that, staff recommend approval.
Questions for Mitch?
Is there a current house on here now?
Yes, there's a single kind of.
Kind of block?
Stone block type style building, yes.
This is the same site where the Dollar General was presented to us, is that correct?
Correct.
And as I recall, there was quite an outcry from the surrounding community about not wanting a, a commercial business here. They were concerned with lighting and traffic and, I guess, potential walkthroughs to this. So it looks like that we have an alternative that is also residential as well that is supported by a, you know, commercial highway. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers, which is probably a bad topic to be talking about at this hour, but.
Are they here yet?
I think many of us haven't gotten dinner yet, so.
This is a proposed site plan for Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers, which would be located within the Lee Bowman Commercial Subdivision. Consists of about .78 acres along Sammerly Parkway West. Property's own C2, and then the surrounding properties are also Zon C2 as well. The site would have several ingress and egress locations, two on the future private roadway north of the site, and two via the adjoining lot 2B, which would tie together all three lots on the Sammerly Parkway road frontage. As mentioned, there is a future proposed roadway that does not exist yet, but it will kind of loop through this commercial subdivision, which would provide access to, a secondary access to all of these parcels. Future vehicular use area, looking at 22,222 square feet. Square footage of open space requirement of 2,222 square feet. Proposing for 2,451 square feet, so they're meeting the requirement. Total parking required, 25 spaces. Applicant's proposing for 28 spaces. In handicap, they are meeting the requirement of two spaces as well. Landscape plan shows shrubs to be planted along Sammerly Parkway road frontage and in landscape alleys along the drive-through area. Trees are also proposed to be planted around the property borders, and the architectural elevations for this building show a mixture of brick and stucco. Several standard comments will need to remain, as well as a couple of staff comments. Staff comment one, to, there's utility easement, which exists along Sammerly Parkway. So we asked the applicant to remove trees that were shown to be planted in that easement, and they did remove those trees. There are shrubs that only remain, so staff comment one can be removed. Staff comment two, existing gas line along Sammerly Parkway extends the entire length of the parcel towards Potomac Place. We asked them to show that. Previously, they only showed a portion of that gas line, so they did show the existing gas line extending the entire way. However, they left the incorrect gas line on the plan, so we just asked that they remove that incorrect gas line. Comment three, to show the total square footage of the restaurant, including the freezer and cooler area in the rear of the building. Currently working on that with the applicant. There's a little bit discrepancy between what the actual square footage is and what they are showing us on the plans. So we're working with that, with the applicant on that and the architect. So that comment will need to remain, being we still have some inconsistencies. Staff comment four, to the vehicular use area calculations were different on a couple of the pages. Asked them to make that consistent, and they did do that. So all that's remaining currently is an amended comment two and staff comment three. With that, we recommend approval.
Mitch, this means design review, correct?
Correct.
Okay. It looks like, just kind of looking at the layout here, it's sufficient enough to allow for stacking on the premises versus onto the roadway, which I note is marked as a private roadway. So it's off of, that's Potomac that goes across, is it not?
It's Potomac, and then there will be a private road that will extend from Potomac over to Cheney, and it will be kind of a rear access to this parcel. Last month, we had the, the gas station at the corner, so there'll be a connection all the way on the backside. And then within the parking lots, there's going to be connections as well, but.
So you're, you guys are satisfied as far as stacking whatnot that can occur?
They've got quite a bit of stacking space.
Okay.
Yeah, in the drive-through.
Other questions or comments?
Kevin, refresh my memory, what's between this and the gas station?
There's nothing now. There's nothing been approved yet.
If you go west of this, towards the interstate, you hit the AT&amp;T and Panera Bread site.
If you go east, there's nothing approved. Then you have the gas station that got approved last month. And then across the road, you got the, the bank there.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I have to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. From Tony, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Regina. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four's been withdrawn?
That's correct.
So that takes us to the December bond review.
Yeah, just have three tonight. The first one is a small bond that we have in escrow. There's a, a small sewer line that would need to be installed for a, a lot in a development. That has not been installed yet. Did talk to the developer, he did ask, this is the Ryan Smith Properties Development on Old Nashville Highway. The developer did ask us to, to please renew this, and so, and we're okay extending this. There's no development yet that, that we need to use that sewer line. The second one, the Lee Bowman subdivision, did talk to that developer. He did get back with me since the packets went out. The sewer, he has indicated the sewer has been completed and that, pretty recently, and that the water should be completed by next week. So we, that's, I would recommend on this one, my initial recommendation was just to extend it six months. I want to get with our utilities department and see where they're at. It may be if they have, are able to complete or before December 20th, which is when it actually expires, if they're able to, are completed with everything, we may be able to reduce this and just extend it for a year as the maintenance bond. And so that's what I would recommend to you, that we reduce and extend it as a year as a maintenance bond. Typically, we would probably keep about 25% is what we usually try to do, so looking at maybe just keep it as around total of 50,000 probably. Again, assuming that what he told me is correct and, and everything works out. Otherwise, we would just extend it at the same amount. And then Creekstone Village is the last one. The developer, I reached out to him, he did not get back to me. There's still several items to do there, and we would recommend a six-month extension on that one. And that's what we got.
Sir Kevin, I'm confused about what you're asking us to do on the Lee Bowman.
Okay. Sorry about that. It is a little bit confusing, I guess, because we haven't been able to get with our utilities department, because this was a pretty recent conversation I had with the developer, so it wasn't, didn't have enough time. I'm, I'm going to recommend if we go ahead and reduce it to $50,000 and extend it one year as a maintenance bond. I'll just go ahead and make that, because I know they've been doing a lot of work out there, so I feel pretty confident that between now and December 20th, that that will, will So that's my recommendation on that one.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the bond review report.
I have a motion to approve the bond review. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bond review. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bond review is approved. Staff comments, other business?
I don't have any other business. I did want to introduce someone to you. Am I right? It's Catherine Smith. She is our new office coordinator, and so she will be at the meetings from here on out and maybe sending you all emails, calling you, whatever. And if you have any questions and need to get in touch with me, you may be talking with her as well, so I wanted to introduce her to you, so you have to place with the name.
I'm sorry, you did say Catherine, right?
Catherine Smith, yeah.
No excuses to be late on anything now, right? You got to replace her?
That's right. That's right. I'm not, we're not by ourselves anymore. So she just started this week, so.
Good.
This is her first week.
Welcome.
Okay, not with the city. She came over from Public Works. First week with us this week.
Now I have an excuse why I'm going to be late. It all rolls downhill.
Yeah, I want to, you know, commend your staff for finding me and getting the package to my house. Mitch, was that you?
Yeah, we had, we had to figure out where you moved to, that's right.
You should have called me. You need to blame this guy over here. Hey, I got something real quick too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Dear friend of mine, some of y'all's friend, Jane Jesse, lives in Smyrna. You know, when I saw this, this little review about traditions coming in and this independent living, Jane's, used to be my next door neighbor. We are the best of friends. So she's always asking me to find a place that has washers and dryers that they can move into, and you know, so. So Jane, if you're watching, honey, there you go. So we found it for you.
This should be our last official meeting before Christmas and the holidays, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Wish everybody happy holidays and safe and Merry Christmas, and we will see you in 2021. We stand adjourned. If you're behind us.